I now call the January 2nd, 2024 Regular Meeting of the City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by Pastor Sherri Jackson of the Erlanger Christian Church. Welcome.
That one with half of a green circle around it. All right. Thank you. Yes, once again, I am honored to be here. Let us pray. Holy God of love, we gather in your presence in this new year with hearts thankful for this day and for the opportunity to participate in your good work in the world. We lift up our hearts, oh Lord, in thanksgiving for all those gathered here this evening who have answered the call to serve your people in this way. We recognize they have been tasked with great responsibility and we pray for your spirit of wisdom and guidance to move in through and around them, leading all of us down paths of justice, peace, and compassion. As we reflect on the past year and consider what went well and how we might have done things differently, we pray that as we look to the future that our hopes and dreams for your people are in keeping with your hopes and dreams for your people. We know that many within our community are struggling in body, mind, and spirit, and they look to its leaders to help make this world a better place. Help us all to make decisions that bring healing and wholeness to your hurting world. May we set aside our personal agendas and gather around our tables with a collective desire to do what is good and right for this community. May we always lead with integrity, compassion, and a genuine concern for the welfare of the people we serve and interact with every day, and truly see one another as your beloved. Give us ears to hear and hearts and minds open and ready to follow where you lead. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Beautiful words. Please rise for the pledge. Okay, Ms. Softman, if you can please take role.
Ms. Nicely.
I'm here.
Mr. Cahill.
Present.
Ms. Kyle.
Here.
Mr. Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Hermes.
Present.
Ms. Skidmore.
Here.
Ms. Reckers.
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Thank you. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes from the December 5th, 2023 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt is presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt is presented. Ms. Reckers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. I'm gonna make one little adjustment. Can we do the public comment first? The special presentation that we have tonight is Chris Manning from Human Nature, and the presentation will be about 30 minutes. And I know that somebody is on the the public comment agenda with little ones, and I was wondering if we could make that adjustment. Is that okay? Okay, all right. Let me get that. Yeah. Let's fight over it. Run, Lemming, run. Thank you so much. All right. Okay, first for public comment is Brett Smith. If you'd like to come to the podium and press the half-green circle. Just state your name and where you live.
Hi, I'm Brett Smith. I live at 107 Locust Street, right down the way over there. I was looking to, do I just start? Is that what I do? I was looking to open a business in Erlanger, actually at the Stam's Meat Market, but I was hoping for it to be a tattoo shop, which I know is pretty hard with zoning. And it is currently zoned as multi-use, and I think tattoo shops are only zoned for commercial use, and it's conditional. But that's where I'm at, so I don't know really what to do from there.
Okay. Did you raise your hand? Okay, go ahead.
I don't, I'm not looking at it right now, but if it is a conditional use, then that would be something that you would go in front of PDS to get the approval. But for some reason, I was thinking it was not a conditional use.
It's not. It's zoned for multi-use and...
And tattoo shops is not one of the conditional...
It's not one of those, no.
Yeah, I mean, so the next steps are to try to either get a text amendment or a zone change. And I would say a zone change is probably harder to do because we can't create spot zones. But a text amendment would probably be the next best thing. But that's going to change the entire zone. So wherever that zone falls, then tattoo parlors...
It's actually this. Like, we're in that zone right now. So, but I'm aware that there's also, like, hair salons in that zone, and other, like, small businesses of commercial use. So I was, like, how would I write the text amendment? Or would somebody else?
Yeah, so probably best. We have your information. I will, I'm the city attorney.
Cool.
I will give you a call in the morning, and I can kind of discuss with you the processes.
Yeah.
With Z21, a lot changed, and I'll be honest, I have not looked at the multi-use zone in several years since we had a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. I think it was Mother's, wasn't it?
I actually started there 12 years ago.
Wicked dragon, wicked dragon. And I haven't frankly looked at tattoos in our zoning since then, and that's been five or six years. So that will give me a chance to be at a computer, kind of pull it up, and then I can get you in touch with who you would need to be in touch with at PDS that could maybe also assist you through the process, okay?
Very cool. All right, very cool. Thanks, guys. I appreciate your time.
This is your cellphone right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll call you probably in the morning, okay?
Cool, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. All right, and Nick Eads, would you like to speak? All right, all right. Good, okay, cool. Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment. So now on to our special presentation, and we have Chris Manning here with us from Human Nature, who is the creator of the Erlanger Road Master Park Master Plan. So as you all remember, last fiscal year, we had a line item that was dedicated to the creation of a master plan for a potential park down on the old abandoned part of Erlanger Road that runs between Houston North, as you're heading up into the Showcase Cinema property, all the way to Turf Way Road. So this is, what Chris is going to present is the masterpiece, award-winning masterpiece, master plan for this park. So thank you so much for being here. It is wonderful to have you in our council chambers this evening.
Great. Thank you for inviting me, and Happy New Year to everybody. Great way to start the year, master plan vision. I've enjoyed really working with your team very much. You have a really great team. Mayor, Peter, everybody that joined us gave us great feedback, asked great questions, challenged us, had a really strong vision that emerged, and so I'm excited to share that. Also wanted to take a moment to thank the multidisciplinary team that worked with us on the project. So my firm, Human Nature, we were the lead, park designers, master planners, landscape architects. But we also had Hub and Weber architects on the team, Bayer Becker engineers, and Brownstone Design for Environmental Graphics and Signage. And each one of the team members really contributed significantly to the to the final vision, so I wanted to make sure, gave a shout out to them. So this is a really unique site. I mean, I've been designing parks for 30 years or so and teaching about it, and I've never seen a site quite like this. It's kind of one of those forgotten areas that runs between things that, you know, but when you get down there, it's like, wow, this is really special, you know, and how do we take advantage of that, right, and turn it into something really amazing? And so I'm going to walk you through the process that we use. This is a copy of the final report that you have. And so we'll run through the first part of it pretty quickly, and we'll slow down as we go and get to some of the renderings that I'm sure you'll be excited about. So, Peter, if you would. So we always start by creating a vision statement, goals and objectives, and of course, we wordsmith that a lot as we work on it and refine it. But a lot of discussion about this being a destination, a destination for the city of Erlanger, a destination for Northern Kentucky. And so that was a driver about being well-connected with the community and the region, and that was another theme that emerged. So go ahead. So these are just some of the goals and objectives that we talked about, celebrating the unique qualities of the stream and the valley, you know, promoting healthy, clean water, welcoming and safe, educational opportunities. This was actually a picture of a wildflower that was growing on the site, and you'll see it actually inspired us to to design one of the features in honor of that wildflower. It's a lobelia, really beautiful species. Go ahead. So the first step that we go through is what we call awareness, and that's where we don't do any design work. We kind of fill our cups with knowledge, get to know the site, get to know the people, and then we document that and we share it. So this is what we saw, this is what we learned, how does that inspire our design? And so this is a series of maps, you know, again, kind of documenting the site, which is sort of wedged in between a lot of different land uses, which makes it very dynamic in its own right, but it's also a deep valley. Go ahead. It's part of a much bigger watershed that feeds water down to the Ohio River. We have a lot of different watersheds in Northern Kentucky, but this one's more directly connected to the Ohio River pretty broadly. Nice little waterfalls up and down the corridor. We're upstream from the Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. That Dry Creek takes you all the way down to where the Anderson Ferry comes across. So just to put it in perspective regionally. Go ahead. And then as we get a little further upstream, you can actually see that the watershed extends across the I-75 corridor into some of the eastern neighborhoods as well. So it's a pretty big watershed, a lot of different land uses feeding water through that valley. And so thinking about that is pretty important. Go ahead. And then really looking at topography. So topo lines, the closer they get together, the steeper things are. And you'll notice that our site's almost completely gray. So that means the topo lines are really close together. So it's a steep site, but there are some cleared areas, some flat areas that we have opportunities to build unique things. The geology is really interesting. You know, we have very thin layers of limestone, and they crumble pretty easily, which is why the stream bed erodes and does a lot of interesting sculptural things. So we try to take advantage of that, too. Go ahead. The soils similarly are pretty erodible, so that's important, kind of having a stable corridor to build upon. Go ahead. We mapped the existing vegetation there and kind of in your most northern and western parts, where you have your most mature and high-quality forest, the rest of it's pretty young, successional forest. We mapped all the utilities in the area. There's quite a few that feed through here, as you can imagine, with all, including the water main, electrical. There's some overhead lines there. There's one in particular that's really low that, you know, it's probably one of the early things we want to deal with. We also did a little noise analysis. You know, I like to call this tranquility mapping. So it's like where it's peaceful and inspiring, that's the darker blue. Where it gets a little loud and bothersome is the red, and you can imagine that's near the interstate and Houston Road and that sort of area. But down in the valleys, it's very inwardly focused, very peaceful, and you hear the water running, which is special. Existing and proposed trails, so we'll talk more about this towards the end. But you're right in the middle of a lot of exciting things going on with trail planning in Northern Kentucky and in the region. Of course, some of you might be familiar with the planned loop around CVG. It's actually the only major airport of its kind with a planned trail loop around it, which is pretty cool that we're doing that. There's talk about some trails going down the Dry Creek Greenway, and then we identified the possibility of a kind of an Erlanger loop that would connect all of your central assets and go through our park. So lots of opportunities to improve connectivity and really celebrate this as a nexus. And this is a little closer-up view of that Erlanger Trail Loop, which would also loop around to this building, kind of a cornerstone of the loop. So we always like to think in different scales, even though we're working on a particular site, you know, how does it fit into a larger context? Very important. And your neighbor there, Circleport, is already promoting this connectivity in their website, in their literature, in their marketing. This is their, this is their content. So you can see the sort of reddish-pink line going over there. That's, that's our park. So they're already promoting that connectivity as being something important in the, in the future. Next slide, look at all these potential partners that we have and users of the park. So you can see our site there in the red outline. I mean, we're, we're sitting right in the middle of a lot of different users and potential partners, which is a really great thing to have. And then vehicular circulation, there's, there's access at both ends. Of course, we're really talking about taking the car out of the middle and making that more of a people space. And so we'll go into that in a little more detail here in just a second. Views and vistas, we mapped several, and there's some really intimate views and some larger views. You can even see part of the site from 275 as you're passing around. So I think these next few slides show those different views. So it's a very intimate creek corridor, and it's actually the right scale that you can get down in there with it, you know, because most of the time, there's not a lot of water in there. You know, it's probably gets a little flashy in the spring, but otherwise, it's very approachable. Get down in there and turn rocks over and find crawdads and, and explore nature. And then there's little floodplains. There's small buildable areas that we talked about before. But you can kind of see this is a pretty typical condition in terms of water level. Excuse me. So then we started to kind of take all of that and, and create a summary of what we call the site anatomy. And this lets us think about the spaces of the site, just like an architect thinks about the spaces of a building. And we start to then align different uses and opportunities, excuse me, with those different spaces. Go ahead. And then we also summarize some of the opportunities and challenges. You know, there's some erodible areas. There's an area where the road has collapsed. So, go ahead. The other thing we started to do was really look at the city of Erlanger and your sense of place. You know, I love the space that we're standing in, in this building. Thank you. Dry. And the city has been doing a really nice job, starting to coordinate branding and architecture, marketing and signage and things like that. And so we really wanted to build on that great progress that you've been making, and so we took the time to get to know more about that. So that's what these slides are. They're starting to summarize those materials and colors and furnishings. Okay, so that summarizes the awareness phase. The next phase is really, we call exploration. Just like the name sounds, we have filled our cup with knowledge, and now it's overflowing. It's time to start sketching. And so we start to throw out a lot of different ideas that we were inspired by. We test those with the client, get feedback. We weed out the ones that aren't liked. We synthesize the ones that are, and we start to see a plan emerge. So you'll see here, we used a lot of different diagrams. Because of the nature of the site, a planned view, as you can see, is really hard to understand. And so we had to kind of break it down into layers. You know, you have the ravine, you have the water, you have access points, you have different features, and then you have a circulation system. And so you have to talk about it in layers like that to understand it. And then we started to sketch out some of the different features. So there was the desire to have a destination event space, for example, a multipurpose space that could be used for classroom, could be used for rental, you know, could be used for family gatherings, corporate gatherings. And so some of the studies there relate to that feature. We also started to look at the language of the architecture and how it related to the site, the view from 275 that I talked about. You know, how do we take advantage of those things and build on very steep topography? And then we looked at a branding exploration, and the most exciting thing that came out of that really was not only a great system of signage, for example, that fits your aesthetic, but also a new name. So we came up with this notion that really this park is about Dry Creek, and it's about this larger connection all the way down to the Ohio River. And so the name of the Greenway at Dry Creek really started to resonate with us, with the team. And so that's kind of the, where we left it as a vision, which to me is really exciting because it speaks to how it's part of something larger. So that was one of the fun kind of highlights of the, of the branding exploration. Go ahead. So then we documented all the feedback that we got on the, the exploration phase and started to synthesize the preferred ideas in the next phase, which is the vision phase, which is where all the fun 3D renderings are that I know you've been waiting for. So Greenway site, again, we're gonna build the story in layers, so it's easy to understand. But this is a site, very diverse site. We also, as we worked on it, we added the vacant site across eastern there, below the warehouses, as an important part of this arrival and park site. So go ahead. So this is kind of an overview. So improved streetscape coming in Houston Road. There's a park entrance off to your left immediately that you drop into a parking lot. There's a picnic shelter and a playground. And then across the street, there's a dog park with 30 spaces that takes advantage of the topography over there and great views back across the valley to the park. There's a one-way road and trail into the site, takes... There's a one-way road and trail into the site, takes you all the way back to the subdivision and connects up, so that connection is maintained. But then from there, it's pedestrian-only, all the way in to where the old homestead was. And then that, that's kind of the termination to the other access point off of Turf Way. So there's parking off of Turf Way, some improvements under the underpass, which you'll be really excited to see. And then you come in, and there's a parking area and the Crown Pavilion, that's the event center, which you'll see in a moment. And then a very elaborate network of trails and, and destination features, which you'll see more in the renderings to come. Keep going, Peter, and we'll... So this is the multi-use path that is sort of the spine that runs the entire length of the park and connects in all directions. Next one. This is the vehicular network that I talked about. So the, the entrance and parking at the one end, entrance and parking at the other, and then the connection with the neighborhood, connection up to Circleport. Go ahead. And then this is how we plan to do the roads. So the road that comes into the subdivision will be one-way in, and it will have a side path here with a mountable divider and a rail, a protection rail because of the steep topography. So walkers, cyclists, cars will be able to coexist safely along that entry drive coming in. And then on the other side, it'll be a share-the-road concept with some striping, which is very common in, in parks like this. Go ahead. And then the network of pathways, a lot of different ways to explore the site and see all of the different features and different vegetation and ecologies, and we'll layer those on next. So we have a canopy walk, which is connected to the event center and is kind of where the confluence of the streams are. That's highlighted there in the center. That's where your most mature forest is. How do we take advantage of that? Then the next slide shows the constellation of features. So we really started to think about this as a, as a gallery of unique features. So exploring and finding those is part of the fun, part of the adventure. Go ahead. And this is a composite of all those things. So you can really start to get a sense of what an amazing kind of maze this would be to go traversing all these different topographies through different ecological habitats and discovering these features. And again, good access from both ends. Go ahead. So this is just another summary slide of the plan. Let's get to the 3Ds. All right. So some of the inspiration. So the lobelia flower that I talked to you about, the tulip poplar out there, which tulip poplar is the state tree of Kentucky, which is really wonderful. And that flower in the bottom center, that's the flower of the tulip poplar, which is really unique and beautiful. Sweet gum, the idea of getting up into the canopy and then exploring, the idea of celebrating the, the waterfalls, these were some of our key inspirational elements. Go ahead. And so the first one here is, we call the tulip poplar tower. So this is part of the canopy walk, inspired again by the blossom of the tulip poplar, and it's actually kind of an overlook to the stream. So you would be in the canopy walk, and you would walk out and see the stream from there. You can see the path down below. And then a few of the other features, the acorn, the nest, and the sweet gum overlook. Each one of those inspired by different plants that are out there on the site, different ways of getting up into the canopy and experiencing the site from above. And then some unique features kind of more on the ground. The highly eroded area where the, the road had collapsed, actually turning that into like an outdoor classroom where you can teach about stream ecology, but at the same time stabilize that slope. Different bridge crossings over the stream, so you get different experiences and different views. A leaf swing, so a place to sit and watch the water trickle by, listen to the waterfalls. And then the lobelia stream overlook was one of the features that was inspired by the, by the flower blossom that we talked about. Go ahead. And then the architecture, again, building on the, the palette and the style that you have, that really informed all the architectural features in the park. Go ahead. So we have a shelter design, and we wanted this to not only be inspired by this roof and the ceiling, but also feel like it was in the forest. So that's why the poles that support it are like that. It's kind of this combination of being in a space like this, but also being in the forest. Okay? And then we took that and kind of combined that with the idea of, of having some shelters with restrooms and some not. And this shows you how, you know, the restrooms would also accommodate water bottle refilling, and there would be a trailhead map there, so you could always orient yourself. Go ahead. And then the Crown Pavilion is the one that is at the northern end of the site by 275, and it kind of grows out of the hillside, just like the ledge rock in the stream. And so that multipurpose space is half in the hillside and half out, and so you can kind of see the, the glass. And then this terrace that overlooks the stream valley. And then we have this incredible stone wall. It kind of acts as a buffer to 275, but this beacon that you can see is also inspired by the, by the tulip poplar blossom. And so that becomes the beacon, the icon for the park. It's like a crown, which is why we called it the Crown Pavilion. Here you can see it from the 275 side, and that connects to a trail in both directions. Go ahead. There's a little more detail on the, the Crown Pavilion blossom, as well as the, the leaf swing. So again, the idea of these very unique destination features that will draw people here. And then taking advantage of the old bridges as places to sit, but also as educational places to talk about the stream ecology, talk about the culture of Erlanger, lots of different storytelling opportunities. And we started to list kind of a family of, of signage elements that should be part of the park. And then we started to illustrate what some of those might look like. Go ahead to the next one. So this would be different kind of trailhead signage that you would have at major entrances into the park that, again, could have storytelling, could have mapping, park logo, et cetera. You can see how it's tied to the architecture of the buildings, which is tied to the architecture of the city. So it all becomes part of this related family of elements, all the way down to the wayfinding system, entrance sign, et cetera, that all ties in together. And then again, you could tell stories about ecology, you could start to introduce poetry and, you know, local authors, students could be part of that. Lots of different layers. Having a good wayfinding system will be really important because it's such a complex site that should have all of these different components to it. So you can see our good friend Eric at Brownstone really poured his heart into it, showing you, you know, what the, what the signage system could look like in context. All the way down to things in the stream that tell about the fossils and the way our, our land, you know, we, I always like to tell this story. If you go to the overlooks in greater Cincinnati, including Devoo Park or anywhere, you'll see that the tops of all the hills are at the same elevation, which is really unusual. That's because it was once the bottom of a sea, and all the topography that we have has been eroded down, exposing those layers of sedimentary rock. And so this is a great place to learn about that, and all those fossils that were part of the sea back in the day are now being revealed for us to learn about. And then these waterfalls, there's two or three really wonderful waterfalls, and again, they're very approachable, and they have little pools at the bottom. But taking advantage of those and integrating signage. And then we found this really big culvert that goes under 275. That's where the stream actually runs on and crosses under and goes down to the Ohio River, and this is an amazing feature. And we thought, well, why don't we turn that into a work of art? Because most of the time, it's mostly dry, and it would connect over to the other side. And so turning that into a canvas for public art would be really exciting, and again, would be another feature that would draw people there. Go ahead. We sort of took that idea, and we applied it to the other part of the park where you pass under 275, but this is Turf Way reimagined, right? If we're really going to invite people in from around the region, from Circleport, we have to make this gateway a lot more inviting. And so we, we built these small retaining walls, creating parallel parking on both sides, creating a bike lane that connects all the way up and down, and then turned that underpass into a, another canvas, canvas for art and light. So no longer is it this scary dingy place to go. It's, it's a really exciting, beautiful gateway. And here's your view from 275. Kind of been inviting you in with the Crown Beacon there and the bridge. It's like a painting, right? And here's some close-up views of some of those features in context. So one of the shelters and the lobelia overlook next to the stream, you can start to get a sense of how the path and these features, it's like a necklace with jewels on it along that path. And then the canopy walk. Again, different heights, different levels of difficulty, different experiences once you get up there, some close to the stream, some further away, some with overlooks, some more intimate. This is a view of the, the entry parking area and shelter and play area. This is where the existing road comes in, and the dog park would be off to your right. This is the, this would be the primary entrance into the park. And then right across the street, the dog park with its own parking lot. We showed three paddocks here with several different walking loops. And so you sort of work your way up the topography as you wrap around that hillside, and then the very top where the circle is and the, the leaf swing, there's a great view back to the stream valley over Houston Road. So we sort of articulated that as a, as an overlook. So those are the major features. I don't know if Brian made it. I guess he didn't. So I'll try to fill in. So as we were wrapping up the, the vision for the park, we had talked about this idea of the connection with the rest of Dry Creek down to the Ohio River. And as we were talking about that, a partner emerged, and that partner is Cora, Cincinnati Off-Road Alliance. They partner with people all over the region to do mountain biking trails. And they not only help you plan for them, but they help you implement them, and they help you maintain them. And they're a really wonderful, wonderful partner to have. And so they have started to explore the idea of the Dry Creek Greenway on the other side of 275, having this amazing regional destination mountain biking trail that goes down to the Ohio River. And as I said before, it just happens to be where Anderson Ferry comes across. And so that Anderson Ferry could start to be to the regional trail network, kind of like the Purple People Bridge is, a major regional connector for our trails. And so to be connected down there, feeding up to our site, really puts us, again, right in between the Ohio River Trail Network and the CVG Loop. We get to be that linkage right in the middle. So it's taken on a lot of momentum just in the past several months. They hired a mountain bike trail planner from Colorado who's been to the site now a couple of times and had a workshop or two. And so, again, I think it's just one of those things that just snowballs over time, the more people hear about it. And so the mayor mentioned that it was award-winning. We submitted the master plan right after we finished it to the Cincinnati Design Awards, which is a multidisciplinary awards program, and it won an award. So congratulations to you, to us. But we'll apply for more, and I think as the word gets out, again, it will, it will get more and more exciting. So we were very honored to be part of it. We had a lot of fun creating it. I hope that shows in the work. And I guess I could entertain any questions.
I just wanted to add a little bit. So the, the dark green piece that you see kind of zigzagging back and forth, those are the proposed mountain bike trails.
Correct.
And you'll notice that those are on Circleport, Corporex's property, as well as SD1's property. And I think it was back in July, we had a, a large meeting of, you know, Adam Chaney and representatives from Corporex where we discussed this idea. And Brian Bozeman from Cora was the, the leader of that pack. And jumping, you know, fast-forwarding, we secured right-of-entry from Corporex and from SD1, and they are 100% on board with this project. So we've even had meeting KY, Julie Kirkpatrick is on board and actually paying for part of the mountain bike trails to be designed. So this is, it's insane.
Yeah.
So it definitely has some steam.
Yeah, I mean, you were kind of the missing link, it seems, to a bigger regional vision. And to be part of that's really exciting, so.
Are there any questions for Chris?
Not necessarily Chris, but who was, who was part of this? It sounds like we've got some external partners, but who internally? You, Mayor, Peter, did we have anybody from Cherry Hill? Residents? Okay.
Not at this point yet.
Okay.
This is, yeah, it was just internal.
Yeah. We know how important that connection was, though. It's one of the reasons we maintain that one-way in and the combination bike pedestrian connection. Absolutely.
Come a one-way or that will just, Sycamore will become a one-way or it will stay a two-way? The one-way will be past Sycamore.
This is just a, at this point in time, it's just a concept.
Yeah.
And our thought process for what that road could be. And, and part of our process will also was to include, you know, once this plan was completed, presented, is to then to roll it out to Cherry Hill and get input from residents there as well, of course, before moving forward with anything.
Can we go back to the, the entrance slide?
Bear with me. The, you know, the, this type of slide or the...
This is fine.
Okay.
Can you, can you wayfind me here?
Okay. You're, what you're looking at right now is heading north up into the Coke Development right there, the intersection.
Good.
So you're, what you're seeing there at that intersection, heading left, is Old Erlanger Road.
Okay.
At the far upper-right corner of the image.
And I'm glad to hear that Cora's involved in this, because I also put in the safety concepts. I had a question, I wrote down about that. Whenever you had mountain bikes, you had a complexity that involves you guys.
Yeah, it's nice to have a designated area that's, you know, focused on mountain biking. It really is the best way, rather than integrating it with the walking trails.
And right now, SD1 and Corporex are, they have us access. They're not concerned about people being on the property. This is unusable property, I assume. Okay.
From a development standpoint, it is, yeah.
And estimated parking, am I looking at, I saw 20 on one side, 30 and maybe 36. Is that what I was seeing?
Yeah, I want to say there's close to 90. Yeah, I want to say there's close to 90 total.
Okay, so I was thinking.
Yeah, including what's on the parking, on the, on the road, under the Turf Way Bridge.
Okay. And some of these concepts with the bridges and stuff like that, maintenance is always a concern. Is there something more durable than they have out there that you guys are looking at?
In terms of the, like the murals and things like that?
Murals, bridges, things like that.
Yeah.
And then also, I mean, do we have the potential for cameras in here? I mean, okay.
Absolutely, opportunities for cameras. And one of the, one of the things that we do, we work with a lot of public art artists and arts organizations and artworks in the Cincinnati Art Museum and others are some of our clients and would hope to connect them to help curate and advise on some of those major art pieces like the?
It looked like, well, the one part already got some personal art, so.
The event space, how many people would that hold?
50 to 75 was kind of the target zone. And again, driven a little bit by topography.
And then how, I know Tom touched a little bit on the safety aspect and cameras and things like that. But obviously with one-way in and out, and depending on the amount of traffic that there is, if something were to happen in the middle of the park, you know, how would, how would police and fire access that quickly? And do we need to be concerned about, you know, obviously what Tom said about mountain biking and that obviously, you know, creates a new set of safety concerns for people who get injured and accessing them? So talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, the main trail spine that connects one end to the other would be designed to be 10 to 12 feet wide so emergency vehicles could access that. There would be control points for them that keeps the normal daily car traffic out. So, but a lot of times with complex sites like this, with a lot of topography, police like to use other forms of transportation. And so I think as we start to move into, toward implementation, getting the law enforcement input on the details of that, you know, what would be a good way to approach this is the best thing to do. But also, I mean, one of the other things that we see a lot is developing a park ambassador program. And so you get the community involved in being park ambassadors and being your eyes out in the field. You get volunteers regularly involved in cleanups and programming. And just that activity and that presence there, once the park gets known and up and running, really helps keep it more secure over time. And that's the goal that you want. Yes?
So it did sound like you, you know, from the, from the standpoint of this, we're trying to keep this watershed intact as much as possible. It doesn't look like you're touching a lot of this, what you're adding, but is, do you see any impact, especially like the runoff from the warehouses, things like that, increasing that may cause problems? Or do we, do you anticipate that or because of the minimal touch you're going to be using?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. I mean, what I see is neighbors being partners, being potential partners. And so the warehouses, for example, I didn't really point it out, but go, go back to one of the overall views of the park plan, yeah, a little bit further. We're actually showing some proposed reforestation up at the top of the hill. So there's an area that was cleared that's not currently being used for pavement or building, and it's on the park side of the warehouses. Yeah, keep going. So we felt like that was a restoration opportunity that would help the water quality, help the air quality, help the buffer. So you can kind of see the lighter green trees that would be up at the top of the hill. To me, that's a partnership opportunity with the owners of the warehouses and a way to get them involved and out there planting trees. And we'd love to do that with more neighbors. You know, there's some commercial owners upstream that could do some similar things, some stormwater BMPs, and SD1 could help us with things like that for mutual interest. So definitely opportunities to work with your neighbors as you work up the watershed to improve water quality over time.
All right, thank you. I just always worry about our impact.
Agreed. Good questions.
Any other questions for Chris? Jennifer?
Not necessarily for Chris, but what are, what's our next steps at this point?
So our next steps, reaching out to potential stakeholders. So I've already kind of started that a little bit with like Corporex and SD1, of course, to make sure that they have, they were on board with these mountain bike trails. I think when we talked to the trail designer from Colorado, he, he was like very taken by this giant plan and said that it would take a tremendous amount of cooperation and partnership. So to be able to have those two partners already sitting at the table, already on board is huge. Now it's looking at the other, the other potential partners and understanding, how can we take this massive plan? And Chris has provided us phased, a phased approach. Everything is broken down very, very easily so that we can start figuring out, you know, taking little bite-sized chunks out of it. And who are the stakeholders? Who are the partners that are going to sit at the table with us and make this happen? So I, I view this as a huge public and private partnership, very similar to Summit Park. So we've been kind of talking about how did they get something like that done? And how do we, I mean, this is, this is a huge region-changing initiative. So bite-sized chunks and awesome stakeholders at the table, so.
Yeah, it's a very fazeable plan. It's made of a lot of different components and parts, and some of those could be very attractive to donors, put their names on them.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having me in. You know, I would recommend that the city adopt the plan at some point. That's a good kind of commitment for the future. But otherwise, look forward to seeing this thing grow and implement it over time. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris. All right. Yeah, oh, Ms. Kyle.
Could we have a copy of that?
I was just going to say that.
That's awesome. And you know, years ago, Bill Shire used to talk about building a walking trail all the way through Dry Creek.
Yeah?
He did. He wanted that so bad, and we never did anything with it. But this, now it's coming to be only in bigger, way, way bigger than a walking trail. But I love that. I'd love to see the, each little slide with all the comments on it.
Yeah, of course. We will get that out to you. And if you want?
I'll send it out tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll send it out tomorrow. And if you do want like a paper copy, just let me know. You want one? Okay. Yeah, I, I carry one around in my purse. I also save it to my phone. I want to be able to shout this from the rooftops how awesome it is. So however we can give it to you, that's the easiest for your use, please let us know. Okay. All right. Mayor's report. I just wanted to, again, I'm still hearing positive feedback from the Christmas lights. I don't know if all of you are experiencing the same thing, but, I mean, even today, I had someone come up to me and they're like, this is, you've, you've raised the bar, you've changed, changed the expectation for the rest of the cities that are around here, which is really cool. I want them to chase after us. So again, thank you to Public Works, always going above and beyond, truly incredible. And thank you guys for your support and having that line item. Because what, what we're noticing and what I've explained to a couple of different people is we haven't increased that line item, it's just stayed the same. But because we're taking care of the items that we're purchasing, we're able to bring them back out every single year and use them again and grow, grow our displays, so.
I need Public Works at my house because we struggle with that.
I know.
Especially when I'm taking the cheers to the lights because I get so mad getting them stuck in the trees.
Okay. You won't be able to use those again. Yes. Yes, the amount of care that is taken is pretty awesome, so. Very good. And thanks to everybody. I don't know if we've had a council meeting since the Christmas party, but that was the huge, the huge turnout. I mean, it was really incredible. I think we had, oh my gosh, how many people? Almost 200? 200 signed up to attend? So really incredible. We packed the Sterling Events Center like we've never packed it before. And all departments came out in force and we had a really good time. So thank you, guys. All right. City Administrator's report. Mr. Glenn?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. First thing, our Board of Adjustments Committee met in December 18th. And what they did is they approved a conditional use request for the church down at 1961 Bullock Penn Road and to a small events center. So I thought that was a great new use for that space and that was approved. Sad note, Steve Connolly, the Board of Adjustments Chairperson, is moving out of the city and submitted his resignation after 26 years. Great 26 years. I can't believe that he was committed that long. That's awesome, and he would be very well missed. And then we can talk about his replacement at the caucus meeting here in January. Also, in the caucus meeting, want to talk about Task Force. Just, just a review of what task force that we have are ongoing. Do we want to keep them ongoing? And just kind of generally discuss that, along with any kind of new task force, just kind of a recap of what we're doing and what we want to be doing in the future. Also, at the caucus meeting here in January, Kara will be presenting the five-year budget projections that we talked about late last year. And lastly, on my list, Economic Development Director position, vacated position, we are posting that this Friday, the 5th of January, with a deadline of the 26th of January. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gatlin?
We just have one piece of legislation on this evening, which is the second reading of a budget amendment. And I'm going to let Ms. Kramer better explain it because my vision can't see this print.
So this budget amendment is for the new police cruiser that was wrecked on 275, I believe. Not our fault, but we do need to add money to the capital fund. And then also, that's for $58,408. And in the memo, I lined up, or I detailed out what the state bid price was for the Durango and then the equipment and installation. And then at the bottom of the budget amendment is where I've updated the fund balances since we just had our 2023 audit. So I updated beginning fund balances to actual. And then with this new change, it updated our ending fund balances for projections.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Imes, any reports on capital projects?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Just a couple of things to update on. Jefferson Contracting has completed Circlewood Drive, street replacement and sidewalk replacement from Ridgewood to Hartwood. Phase two of Cahill Commons sidewalk, walking path was completed today. The next things to see will be the play structure being installed, and then the basketball goals won't be installed until late spring. The new Public Works facility, the wash bay of the maintenance buildings, it's about two-thirds of the way completed. The foundation walls for the admin building should be poured later this week, weather permitting. And then Public Works has been working with VIOX and VIOX for the next group of streets to go out to bid for milling and resurfacing, which will include sidewalks, which will be the remainder of Circlewood Drive, Northway, Pleasure Isle Drive, and bids are due back January 17th.
Any questions? All right. Any other reports from department heads?
I just had something real quick. I'll put something more detailed out for everybody so you can kind of see where we ended the year. But this year, PD ended the year with $45,485 calls. It's a lot of calls. We were 3,000 above last year, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. A lot of those calls and what you'll see in the more detailed breakdown is a lot of that is self-initiated activity. So, you know, we are really preaching to the guys to get out into the neighborhoods, do special area checks. I think that that is, there's no way to 100% prove it, but I honestly believe that the self-initiated patrols in those areas has really cut down on the burglaries, random thefts, vehicle thefts, knock on wood. We are not experiencing the same thing that other cities are right now. So that's, that's a good thing for our guys and gals. They're out there, they're not, you know, sitting in a parking lot behind a gas station at 3:00 AM. They're driving around in your neighborhoods checking, so. But I'll give you guys a more detailed breakdown. But 45,000 calls for 45 officers is a, that's a fair amount of calls, so. With zero substantiated complaints on any officer for the year, so. That was not our fault.
All right. Any other department heads? Okay. All right. Any reports from task forces? Ms. Jasper Lucas?
The only thing I wanted to mention is since the last incident in December, early December in Cherry Hill, I don't think there's been anything else, thought that anybody's heard about. I will mention that KYTC did put up some additional signage on Turf Way and Queens Court because those are their roads. So Boone County couldn't put, put signs there, so the state did put signs there. So just wanted to report that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Nicely?
Please remind everyone.
Okay. She says, please remind everyone of the next city beautification task force meeting, January 16th, 5:00 PM at Public Works. Thank you.
Do we want to talk about the banner? Banner program? Or do you want me to talk about it?
Sure, go ahead.
The city beautification effort, right?
Yeah, good point.
So the beautification banner sponsorship program that we had put out to the businesses, I think we gave them, I don't know, less than a month, and we had $7,000 raised from that program. So we have 14 different banners that are going up along Commonwealth for now. And hopefully that with those banners going up, the exact same thing that happened with the, the honor banners is going to happen with this program. So we had started the honor banner program with 13 banners, and now all of a sudden we have 100, 102. So how brilliant would that be if the beautification banners took off like that? So hopefully we'll see that once they are up and running. And Bobby in the sign shop is making them, and they're looking great, so. Awesome program for a great cause. All right, any other?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to give a quick update. There was Parks Master Planning Task Force meeting this evening. And we reviewed the budget for the fiscal year '24, '25. And also talked about the Sherborne Park Master Plan, the Cahill Commons update. year 2425. And also talked about the Sherborne Park master plan, the K O Commons update with the Phase Two and the signage. And we'll be meeting again on February 6th at 5:00 PM at Public Works. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Ms. Rakers?
I do plan to review the modified document that, that Jack Atlin had sent out at the beginning of December. And I'll bring that to caucus so that we can discuss those changes so we can get the cleanup on the February agenda.
Okay. Is that going to be okay?
The grant program, yes. Yeah, I was going back in time trying to think what you're talking about. Now I know what you're talking about.
Sherri, do you mind adding that to the caucus? Tyson?
I had one more thing. I just wanted to clarify. Mr. Glenn, you had mentioned about revisiting all the task forces. Is this something, do we need to reapply for the, the task forces?
I don't believe we need to put in a new application. I don't think we've ever done that.
Okay.
As long as it's continuing to meet the criteria that's expected.
Okay.
I don't believe we've ever done that before.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Okay, any, all right. Ms. Hoffman, are there any bids this evening?
There are. I think Chief Gottsie wants to report on one of them.
So firing, firing EMS department went out for bid for new extrication equipment. This is the battery-powered equipment, which will help us out tremendously. We will no longer be tethered to our vehicle. Something goes over the hill, we can go over the hill with it. So we went out for bid on that and came in at 138708, which was within our budget. And so we will move on that.
Thank you. Ms. Hoffman?
So I wanted to report on the December online auction that we had. There were five items that was up for auction and all sold with a total auction revenue of $19,464. And in January, we'll have another online auction. It begins January 17th and will end January 30th. And there'll be two items for auction. It's two of our Dodge Chargers.
And that's all. All right. Great. Is there any unfinished business? Okay. Is there any new business? I think so.
I, I wanted to take a moment just to read some correspondence that we had gotten that was addressed to the mayor of Erlanger and city council. You know, we get our fair share of complaints about things. And it isn't very often that we get a written, handwritten note of someone who is happy and appreciative of things that we do. So I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that. So this says, "To whomever is responsible, I would like to offer a word of thanks and appreciation for the beautiful Christmas lights in and around Erlanger. The beautiful lights, especially around the intersection of Turkeyfoot, Stevenson Road and Misty Creek, offer a bright cheerful side of an otherwise drab and gloomy world. As a 30-plus-year resident of Erlanger, thanks. May God bless Marvin Stamper." So thank you, Marvin Stamper.
Thank you. All right. Any other new business? All right, legislation?
Hi, this is an ordinance to the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, amending Erlanger ordinance number 2557 and the budget adopted thereby for the city of Erlanger for the fiscal year beginning on July 1, 2023 and ending on June 30, 2024. As was discussed by Ms. Kramer, this budget amendment does several things. One, it adds the new unmarked cruiser to replace the one that was in a wreck. And also updates the beginning and ending fund balances. This is the second reading.
All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this ordinance as read? Ms. Rakers, Mr. Cahill, any discussion? Good, good call. We forgot. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hermes?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Cahill?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Skidmore? Ms. Kyle?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Nicely?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Rakers?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Skidmore?
Motion carried. All right. Are there any announcements for this evening? Okay. Do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Ms. Rakers, Ms. Kyle, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.